It's Wednesday, June 8th, 2022, 6:00 PM. This regular meeting of the Board of Commissioners is called to order. City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Mayor Hendricks?
Here.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Here.
Commissioner Taglerini? Commissioner Kerr?
Here.
Commissioner Hudson?
Here.
Will let the record show that Commissioner Taglerini is absent.
Next, will you join Mr. Trask in the invocation and pledge of allegiance?
Heavenly Father, as the citizens of the city of Madeira Beach meet together to address our local concerns and opportunities, we give thanks to you for the bounty that we enjoy in all aspects of our community life. We ask for your inspiration to strive for excellence in our endeavors to serve the public and grant us peace in our world and harmony between all people to your greater glory. Thus, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next is approval of the agenda. Has anyone got anything they'd like to change around or anything?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Sir, second?
I'll second it.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Next is public comment. If anyone has any public comment, please approach the podium, state your name and address. You have, this will be for anything not on tonight's agenda, you have three minutes to speak. You're not going to come up and give your dad a hard time? Now's your chance. Uh, next is the consent agenda.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Okay, unfinished business? I don't think we have any unfinished business tonight. Okay, thought that was part of the consent agenda. Okay. Next is ordinance 2022-15, ordinance to the city charter, session 2.2, Board of Commissioners created, qualifications, term of office and vacancies, subparagraph B, qualifications and term of office, and an amendment to city charter, section 4.8, induction of Board of Commissioners into office meetings, first reading and public hearing. Mr. Trask?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to read ordinance 2022-15 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida submitting to the electors of the city of Madeira Beach a proposed amendment to city charter, section 2.2, Board of Commissioners created, qualifications, term of office and vacancies, subparagraph B, qualifications and term of office, and a proposed amendment to city charter, section 4.8, induction of Board of Commissioners into office meetings, to provide that the terms of all members of the commission, including the mayor, will begin upon induction into office at the Board of Commissioners' first meeting following the election and providing for an effective date. That was reading of ordinance 2022-15 by title only.
Okay, floor is open for discussion.
I think we beat this one around pretty good. I think we got it, yeah, I think we got it right where we want it and I'm good, just the way it's written.
I agree.
Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2022-15 as written.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Next is ordinance 2022-16, prescribing the manner of holding the general election, providing for the polling locations for election, providing for two charter amendments, first reading and public hearing. Mr. Trask?
Thank you, Mayor. This is ordinance 2022-16, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, calling for a general election on November 8th, 2022, for two proposed charter amendments, providing for publication, authorization, election expenditures, identifying the Pinellas County canvassing board as the canvassing board for the November 8th, 2022 general election, providing for repeal of ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict herewith to the extent of such conflict, and providing for an effective date. That was reading of ordinance 2022-16 by title only.
Floor is open for discussion.
No, this makes sense.
Yeah, I think, I think we've covered most of this in the workshop to, certainly to my satisfaction. Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-16.
Sir, second?
I'll second it.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Hudson?
Yes.
Commissioner Kerr?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
Mayor Hendricks?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Next is ordinance 2022-17, alcoholic beverage sales, first reading and public hearing. Mr. Trask?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to go ahead and read this ordinance by title only, but I want to bring to your attention a provision in the Pinellas County Code of Ordances that kind of prohibits what we're doing here tonight. So I'm going to give you some direction on that. But I'm going to read the ordinance, ordinance 2022, uh, 2022-17, an ordinance of the city of Madeira Beach, Florida, amending section 6-2 of the Code of Ordances of the city of Madeira Beach to allow for the sale of alcoholic beverages in sealed containers for off-premise consumption to begin at 7:00 AM and providing for an effective date. As you know, this direction was given to a senior associate here with our law firm who was covering for me on vacation to, um, you know, provide to me some direction relative to changing section, um, 6-2 of your code relative to the timing. Prior to this meeting tonight, I did do a little bit of research to make sure that we're not in conflict with the controlling ordinances that are in Pinellas County Code. And I did find that there is a problem. The problem is, is that in 6-29 of the Pinellas County's code, it provides, and I'm just going to read it, it's one sentence, "All business establishments in Pinellas County, licensed or unlicensed, dealing in alcoholic beverages, public or private, either directly or indirectly, shall remain closed from the hours of 3:00 AM to 8:00 AM on each day of the week unless the municipality in Pinellas County establishes a shorting, shorter opening hours as provided in section 6-31 of this article." So what that basically is saying is, is that we can shorten the hours of operation, in other words, make it 9:00 AM, 10:00 AM, 11:00 AM, but we can't lengthen the hours of operation before 8:00 AM. I provided to you a copy of my email that I provided earlier, as well as the Pinellas County Code sections that deal with this. And so I'm suggesting to you that if we adopt this ordinance, it's possible that you immediately get challenged and it would be overturned. That Pinellas County ordinance controls what we're doing with regard to alcoholic beverage sales in, in not only the city of Madeira Beach, but all other cities in Pinellas County. So what I would ask for, if you're in agreement with that opinion, is, is to have a motion to approve the ordinance and then vote it down. Because the reason that I wanted you to do it in the affirmative is you have all your motions in the affirmative and then you can vote it up or down. So that's what I'm asking for you to do after you hear from the public if there is any on this item. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, the one I have is this, does this, is this specifically to retail off-premises sale?
Any sales of alcohol?
Any sale at all?
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's
Yeah.
The clarification I needed. Is there any public comment on this? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-17.
Sir, second?
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll?
Vice?
No.
Commissioner Kerr?
No.
Mayor Hendricks?
No.
Thank you.
The motion failed four to zero.
Okay, I don't think we have any unfinished business tonight or contracts and agreements. Is there any new business that has come up? Staff reports, Mr. Gomez?
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. And just to, excuse me, briefly go over this past month's city manager's report that you have in the packets up on the screen. Lots happening, lots of activities, events. Obviously, we continued providing our daily services and cleanups, maintaining road streets, adding signage, and all, and lots of, again, ongoing daily operations, excuse me. Did have, again, quite a few events as we're celebrating our 70, we're in our 75th anniversary celebrations and quite a few events and activities that we held, including our, our group or gala. Many of our partners continued also holding and promoting events, activities, including as part of our 75th anniversary, the Trash Pirates organization giving out the 75 buckets and pickers for residents and a couple of businesses to continue to help us out. We're also celebrating national boating, or safe boating, National Safe Boating Week. We celebrated, had read a proclamation at the last workshop, and then issued a daily reminder to folks about boating safety now that we're in, pretty much in the middle of boating safety, as well as just general water safety and awareness. Our fire department put information in our report about rip currents and how to stay safe and avoid and what happens if you're out swimming and what to do. We also started working on our budget for next fiscal year, fiscal '23. We held a workshop on our budget a couple of weeks ago and will be holding the next one, excuse me, on Wednesday, June the 22nd at 4:00 PM. We are, various projects that have been ongoing throughout the city, mainly on 140th Avenue, the repair of the street caused by some utility damages, that should be completed next week as they resurface the, that section of 140th from Island Drive up to Pruitt, that should be completed by the end of next week, barring any weather delays. And no other project, significant changes on city projects as we're still working with finishing surveying for the groynes, additional work on the undergrounding that, waiting for Duke Energy and a couple of the other utility providers to move some of their poles. And we're hoping to have that completed by the fall, as well as the, the groin repair work likely will go into early of 2023. And again, as I stated, lots of events, activities. Wanted to remind everybody that there is a small exhibit at Heritage Village that kind of showcases a little, our city, it's titled On the Waves of Change, that gives a little bit of the history from the fishing industry to tourism to development here in, in Madeira Beach. And you walk through like a little cottage and there's about half a dozen of these, about six and a half feet tall by three feet tall banners with images and descriptions of the history of Madeira Beach. As I said, we, earlier today, the mayor and vice mayor and I attended the National World Ocean Day event celebration and cleanup held by a multitude of organizations from the Keep Pinellas Beautiful to Clearwater Marine Aquarium, Duke Energy, Water Warrior Alliance, Trash Pirates, et cetera, Trash Turtles. So a very nice event, just to kind of showcase what's been happening in Madeira Beach and since we're in turtle season, as well as Duke Energy installing additional turtle-friendly lights. We continue, on the 24th of this month, we'll have the final Friday event out at John's Pass. And so lots of other events listed here in the report. To reiterate, we'll be having our, our fireworks will be taking place on Sunday, July the 3rd at 9:00 PM, as opposed to on Monday, the 4th, so Sunday, July the 3rd for our fireworks. We're in the middle of, or we're in the middle, we're in the beginning of hurricane season and again, reminding residents to stay alert, make sure they have all their, all their house items and personal items in order. Also, we have a couple of days left where anyone can take advantage of the, one of the several sales tax-free periods where you can purchase disaster preparedness supplies such as generators and other items, including equipment and supplies for pets. Those are sales tax-free through the end of this Friday. And you'll hear me, as we go through all of these meetings, again, just reminding everyone to stay alert, stay ready, when hopefully we won't have any storms, but certainly nothing like, this will be the 30th anniversary of Hurricane Andrew, but hopefully we'll never have anything like that here, but it's just a good reminder to stay, stay alert. We also continue to remind our residents of, because it is turtle nesting season, regarding to leave no trace when you're out on the sand, please pick up after yourself, fill any holes. And yes, we love people to make sandcastles as many as you would like throughout the day. When you do leave, we ask that you please place the sand back as it, as it was. There are lots of other information regarding, again, city activities for private developments. There's a page identifying, I have it up on the screen, as to some larger projects that are still under review and others where, you know, different levels of, of permits and are occurring, such as, you know, the additional townhomes being built where foundation permits have been issued. We are, is, continuing to see lots of residential and commercial permits that are being issued. We continue to just see a, a similar level of activity month to month, although may seem to be a little bit higher than prior of months, but over $3 million in, in work valuation that occurred through our building and, and planning and zoning offices. And again, we continue, our parking revenue continues to remain, exceed the prior years, but of course, part of that is due to the additional 50 cents per hour. We have made some changes to our, our parking, one, our visitor parking will turn to the over, visitor overnight parking, folks will no longer have to come here to City Hall to pay for that. They'll be able to do that at the lot that they are parking in and either pay through our, the mobile app that we use called, called Park Mobile, or they can pay directly at the kiosk, at the lot that they park in. So it will alleviate a considerable amount of administrative time that, that staff at our front lobby was spending, just answering phone calls, processing those permits, taking payments, answering questions. Lots of information has been disseminated. One other change in parking due to just too many issues regarding vandalism, just erratic and dangerous behavior. At the John's Pass Park parking lot, we are, we had to make the decision to close that parking lot. And again, just that parking lot at John's Pass Park or 129th Avenue, that will close nightly at 9:30, the parking lot. The park is still open and people who fish late at night, very early in the morning, they can still access those areas, just not via their vehicle into the parking lot. They can, you park at John's Pass Village, the street, at Village Boulevard. Parking is also available on 130th Avenue, the lot that's about 600 or 700 feet just to the north. And again, we've had the adjoining property express many concerns about excessive noise, cars revving tires, kids, mainly youth, out there from drinking alcohol to fights to, so our sheriff's deputies have been responding quite a bit and really, they suggested that we try this to see how it works. So we will do this temporarily for at least the next three months and then decide after that. We are going to be adding cameras to the lot. Cameras can only do so much as a deterrent. Ideally, if you take away the opportunity for somebody to misbehave, then the, miss the, the erratic behavior tends to go away or go elsewhere, but that's what we're doing just temporarily for that parking. The, and I just wanted to cover, all of our other operations again, continue, our marina, we've had some, obviously, people asking, you know, the cost of fuel going up and that's for everyone, for vehicles, for boats, is no exception. So our, again, we're simply going as the market goes regarding the price of, of the fuel at the marina. And just a few, like I said, lots of other data in the report, but really nothing significant, just reminders throughout the report, such as our fertilizer ordinance, where you're not allowed to use certain types of fertilizer, and the projects that I mentioned earlier. FDOT continues to do some bridge repair work, although mainly over Treasure Island. And our summer camp started at our recreation center, which we've had, I guess, for many years, but we, again, that started last week and it'll continue until school, for 10 weeks until school resumes. And we'll be hosting a few softball tournaments coming up out here at our softball fields. And then the next rather large event on June, Saturday, June the 18th, is the Mad Beach Throwdown Car Show and Music Festival that will, will occur at, on Madeira Way in the, from about 9:00 AM till 3:00, followed by a musical festival here at Rock Park from 4:00 PM on. That's, I'd be happy to answer any questions, comments. Oh, and the, one, sorry, one final update, we are still working and I haven't briefed Mr. Trask, but I will this week regarding the response we did receive back from the, from Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission regarding our ordinance for the no-wake zones. They provided some comments that we may need to revisit that ordinance. I will get with Mr. Trask to do that and we will report back to you at the July works, workshop at the very latest, but I'll keep you updated when I notify you, usually in my weekly email to all of you. But we're still, we're reviewing that with them and hoping to have some sort of resolution over the next couple of months. Happy to answer any questions, comments?
Mr. Gomez, going back to the hurricane season, do we have a plan for providing sand, for sandbags?
We will, we do, and we do have sandbags and sand. I don't have all of the details with me exactly where, but we will provide that information. And we'll probably release it next week as to how that would work.
Okay, because we've stolen it from the beach before and
Yeah, no, we've
We need permission to do that. And so I think Megan has talked to the county or the state and they won't give us permission, but they'll give us quick permission. And I believe last year we purchased sand
Yes.
Or was donated sand and that's got us through, but just so we get our ducks in a row.
Yes. I mean, that's what we're going to do.
We could, actually, we could take a backhoe and get some out of, out of John's Pass
Yeah.
And, and set it up in the parking lot so it has time to dry out and just fill bags there. And something we need to do this year, the Reddingtons participate in, in, uh, sandbags. They furnish us with sandbags. They furnish us with some sand, but I know for a fact, Treasure Island has told their residents, they're not going to give them sandbags. If they want sandbags, come up to Madeira Beach. So I really think we need to check driver's licenses when we're giving out sandbags because we can't, we can't fill them for everybody. We tried. I know, I saw some people last year that, that I know and I knew were coming up from Treasure Island. One lady got, I think, probably 50 bags.
Well, I will tell you, Mayor and Commissioner, we are definitely confirming and reviewing residents, whether people live in our city or not, we have particularly for the resident parking passes. As of last week, we had issued 2049 resident parking passes and at least since the current staff that's at the front, so it's been a few months, we are definitely checking and we will going forward. I think in the past, there were, it wasn't as robust a process, but I'm a stickler for if you live where, we will confirm where you live.
I actually was asked the question today at World Oceans Day about, they live across the bridge, but their address is Madeira Beach. I said, well, if you don't, if you're not actually in Madeira Beach, if you're unincorporated Pinellas County, we'd be more than happy to bring you into the city, incorporate you.
And we can annex.
If you would like to do that, we will look at annexing that area, but other than that, you have to pay for parking.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, and there's a property that's actually within the corporate limits of the city of Seminole, and for some reason, the Department of Highway Safety and Motor Vehicles lists Madeira Beach as their city.
Yeah. So, on the closing of the parking lot, is it tending to drive the, the folks that are causing the problems down there to Archibald Park or any of the other parking areas?
So far, no, but certainly the deputies and our parking staff that are out till about 11:00 are, will keep monitoring that, but so far, it has not. But of course, we'll keep watching that. I think we have quite a few, particularly Archibald Park, there are, some of our, how should I explain, some of our residents and visitors who, who visit certain businesses around here tend to keep an eye on what's happening at Archibald.
Yeah.
So they, they do a good job and that's how I found out a lot of what's been happening late, particularly between like 11:00 and 2:00 in the morning. So, yeah, we'll be on top of that to make sure that they don't go somewhere else in our city.
Okay, and I, uh, any other words from Duke Energy on the rest of the Turtle Alliance?
Not, they'll, they're, continue to work on it. They had supply concerns in getting parts, but they said they'll still continue to finish, hopefully over, they said, over the next two months.
Okay, because I, yeah, I noticed, I noticed the other night when I took a drive just to see where, they hadn't changed them. And with today being World Oceans Day, the one place they haven't changed them out is Archibald Park. So, and then one, I think there's one down by you, Doug, down by your store, and one other one down that way. Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else got anything?
I just had a quick question on the graphs for the parking meters. On the first column, where it says series four, then series one, two, and three, is that a, just a misprint? That should be 2022?
Yeah, it should be the years as opposed to series. Sorry, we'll get that corrected, yeah.
And one question, we had a, at one of the workshops, we had a short time period that we could do something about smoking on the beach and we all kind of looked at each other and shrugged because we don't want to restrict people's rights, but we want to keep the beach clean. Have you guys heard anything from residents or anybody saying this was a, they were for or against it? Because we were all just kind of undecided or?
I will tell, I've heard more I will tell, I've heard more for to not allow smoking on the sand. However, I think that most people have said, well, how are you going to enforce it? And that's the key is how are we, I mean, really, we couldn't, about the best that we could do would be signage, signage and more signage and reminding folks. But I think in terms of citing somebody, that's, that probably will not happen.
I mean, you can cite them more for littering with their cigarette butts than you can just the smoking. And that's, that's the issue is that the cigarette butts that are being left. Enforcement.
And I believe it will be up to cities whether we want to take, or whether the Mayor and Commissioner would want to take any action to adopt an ordinance that would prohibit smoking on any of our parks. And that would include the beach, the sand.
I want to pipe in here. I think that we did some research on this six or eight months ago, and I think that the research revealed that that's all preempted to the state and we don't have the ability to regulate it. So I'll follow up on that. I'm rooting myself for now and I'll let you know.
Yeah, there was some discussion.
But there is, I think there was a bill that may have been adopted or would, it was awaiting the governor's signature. That would, that would give the authority to cities whether to adopt an ordinance disallowing it.
All right.
But I'm not sure if the governor signed it or not.
Yeah, I remember Mr. Trask was the one that, I thought you were the one who brought it up and said that there was a window where this was possible, but, so we had to do something in a certain time period.
Yeah, I remember that. I'll, I'll, I'll check on this and I'll send you an email so that you're up to speed on it as soon as, as soon as this is completed, next day or so. Okay.
Yeah, cities are being preempted on a lot of stuff from the, by the state. Next is agenda setting. I've got a list you folks may also.
May I start?
Sure.
I just have basically two, two items. One of the first, I guess, criticisms I ever received once inducted was that it seemed like the board or the city didn't really have any master plan. Now, as far as the city development, city, what, you know, like a 20-year plan, 10-year plan, that sort of thing. Now, spending time in the, on the planning commission, I know that there was the Duane Report that was developed, I believe in 2002, so it's 20 years old. And with all the discussion on what can be done with the marina, what can be done with Johns Pass, and reading the Duane Report, I'd like to get that on a discussion as far as what the city should do, if anything, as far as a plan forward. I know we have the comprehensive plan, but that's totally different than the Duane Plan. I don't even know if the whole board had received a copy or read the Duane Plan or not. But I'd like to get that on as an agenda item. And the other item is I know that the mayor, you're able to go to the Big C on a monthly basis. Is there a way that the board could get a copy of those minutes or the minutes available online?
It's public records. You can ask Clara for a copy.
And they're online at the Big C's site. And I'll, I'll send them to you because I think I did email you the agenda for the last meeting. But we'll make sure that you do get them.
And they're open meetings if you want to attend. You can go in and sit in the audience.
Well, it's, it's not always possible at 9:00 in the morning to be able to do that. So, you know, I know when they are hosted here, they're online. But that's only one out of, what, five or six or whatever it is. And then, you know, possibly have a discussion as the, as the board is if there's anything that the board would like to ask the mayor to take to the Big C. So, you know, time to be able to discuss that, you know. We're dealing with, you know, FEMA regulations, we're, you know, we're fortunate enough to have the beach groins or any of the other cities trying to get grants to do the same because that does impact our community. You know, so I'd like to have that discussion.
Yeah, we can do that. Actually, there are several communities that have asked for groynes rather than beach nourishment because they've seen how, how efficient the groynes have been in Madeira Beach. And they would, they would, and there's a big issue with, with whether or not beach nourishment's even going to happen again because there are residents that are not giving easements up and down Sand Key. And if the Corps of Engineers doesn't get those easements, they're not going to do beach nourishment. So although we've never gotten money, any kind of funding because we don't get the sand, we're in much better shape now than the other communities are.
Just, you know, but the, and that's great. The, but the whole, I think, a coordinated effort with, I think there's some things with like the FEMA regulations and restrictions that if, I don't know if we have a representative that goes to see FEMA, I believe we do. But, you know, it's striking to me, it's small things, well, it's not small things, with sea level rise, that if you're gonna build a new structure, I don't know, do you know you're not allowed to bring filtered in? You're not allowed to add it, add it, and there's certain things, it just don't make, doesn't make any sense to me. So I don't know.
I agree.
It should be a discussion that I think the Big C should take there.
Is that everything? Okay. You know, I thought 2022, that's 06 and 08, were going to be back on tonight's agenda. I thought we discussed those. And we're going to bring them back for a vote after we talked about them at the workshop. Am I mistaken on that?
They had to be, they had to be advertised for second reading, which after the workshop, it doesn't meet the 14-day requirement by charter.
Okay.
I think Linda said that she, that we were going to have a more comprehensive review of it. She was gonna talk almost lot by lot and give us a background and give us an education.
Okay. Okay. That's how I was looking at that for... The other thing, couple of things. One, I would like to see the beach groynes. I would like to see us start on the south end of the beach rather than the north end of the beach. And the reason for that is more rapidly being able to catch sand that's going into the pass and then work northward. And we need to have a discussion. In fact, I would like to see us, first of all, does everyone realize that we got $1.55 million from the state thanks to Linda Cheney? I was calling her frequently. She was calling the governor's office every day. And it was the squeaky wheel that got oiled because a lot of other projects were, were not funded this year. So we were very lucky to get that. But Linda and I were out on the jetties the other day and she brought up the fact that we probably need to put some buoys out there, some no-swimming buoys, right around the corner of the jetty. You know, people pay no attention to signs, but any little thing we can do to help prevent something like that from happening. I know we've, we've got to move some signs down there. I've, I've mentioned a number of times to get these signs in locations where they're better seen. If we need bigger signs, whatever we need to do, we need to be very, you know, we need to be proactive on getting the right signage up down there. We need to fast-track the dredging, which means we need to get an RFP out as soon as possible on that. I don't know where we stand on talking with the county or anything, but those are things I, I'd like to see us get moving on. What else? Okay, that was it for me.
Hi, up. Got a couple of things. I was curious because I know we're having a budget workshop on the 22nd as well. One thing, since I was part of the staff here, that I would like to be able to do is if we're gonna do that, I would like to move that up earlier during the day so we don't take these people away from, you know, let's do, can we move that to like noon or 1:00 or 2:00 and then move our meetings up? I know Tom has something he's gonna present to us as well. But if we could do that, maybe get a little lunch here because, or something like that, where we don't have to pull these guys away from their families. And that's, I know a lot of them like to show up at these meetings, but I'd rather them not be here if they don't have anything on the agenda. But if we're a budget workshop, at least let's kind of, so we can beat it around a little bit, let's do it earlier in the day and then if everybody's in agreement, it's only gonna be the four of us because I know Commissioner Taglari still won't be here. If we can move it up and try to bang all that stuff out and even move up the workshop to right after the, the budget workshop as well. So if that's conducive with everybody, I think that just makes more sense. And the second thing is, I think our mayor is being way too humble. He has as much to do with us getting that grant as, as Ms. Cheney does as well, although, I mean, Linda did an amazing job. John has had his hands and got his hands dirty and really dug in there and I'm very proud of you, sir. So thank you from, from me. That's all I got.
Okay. I, I'm fine with 2:00 for that budget meeting if...
And then the workshop at 5:00 or, or 30 minutes after the, but I think we need an exact time to advertise the, the workshops.
Or even 4:00 if we, if we get heavily involved in the budget. There's something I have brought out every year, and I know, Doug, you've heard it before and Dave, you heard it this past year, and that is getting in the budget to have these parks properly taken care of because, you know, Patriot Park, the park out here, you know, and Archibald and, and even Johns Pass, they look like seven miles of blown-up highway a lot of times. And we've got to, if we're going to be a first-class town, then we need to keep our grounds up first class. And this will be the third year that I've asked for that and it, and hopefully it's not the third year that we don't have some funding in the budget to, to take care of these parks properly. That, and five or six boat slips down here to see how they work out, even if we put meters on them like they do. Treasure Island has one boat slip. It's got a parking meter on it. But local residents, again, wouldn't have to pay for it, but if people come in and they want to dock their boat and go to a restaurant or go to the park or whatever, they've got boat slips to do it. And we can try five or six and see how it works. And if it doesn't work, we won't do anymore. But I think we need to get a start on it. So that's a couple of things I'd like to see put in the budget and maybe we can discuss that at the workshop if we need to, but probably at that budget workshop.
Thousand percent on board with having a separate budget for all the parks, pocket parks, everything like that. That's terrific idea and I think, you know, that's easy to do. I mean, I think we just give them, give them their own line item and kind of roll with it, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Hudson, got anything for us?
Looks like the list is long enough.
Yeah.
And Mayor and Commissioner, one other, we will have the library budget for you to approve at the July commission meeting. In other words, we, I think we all received an email of making that request, so it'll be at the July 13th. Do I have the right regular meeting date?
I have to say, the new library board is doing a tremendous job. I've been looking around over there and seeing what they're accomplishing. The, the library is so much better off than it was. Getting a new roof now, the grounds have been fixed up, the, you know, restroom's getting remodeled and all. And, and of course, and, and our, the amount the city is, is putting into the library has been lowered. There, the, the new library board is doing a tremendous job over there. And, and we, they are in the works of interviewing for a new library director. So I think that's got us covered. For agenda setting, reports, correspondence, Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Currie, you got anything for us?
No, sir.
Well, I just, you know, I was going, Linda was going to come tonight. She called me this morning. She's got the flu, so she couldn't make it to World Oceans Day. And she was going to come in tonight and give us a presentation on, on the funding for the dredging of Johns Pass. We also got some road funding. The Johns Pass funding is, normally it's a match 30% to 50%. This is 100% funded by the state. So that was, that was really something. So that's all the more reason to get that moving as quickly as we can. And Dylan Hubbard told me that they saved another child this past weekend that was getting washed out to, you know, just the currents were carrying him right out the pass. So all the more reason to fast-track it. That's all I've got. Mr. Trask, have you got anything for us?
I wanted to pursue it through the Sunshine Law Statute 286.01, Part 8. I'm asking for a shade meeting, out of the sunshine meeting in the case of City of Madeira Beach versus Overture Realty. You remember that we did have a shade meeting on April 13th. We've gathered some additional information as requested and I would like to bring that back to you. And so I'm asking for that shade meeting to be held. I had proposed 3:30 on the 22nd, but whatever time that we can fit it in, it'll probably be about an hour, 45 minutes to an hour like the last one. So if we could get in on the 22nd sometime, that's what we would shoot for. We're just trying to do it on a day that you're already here.
1:00? Like, can you be here at 1:00?
Absolutely.
All right. That's all right with you guys. We'll just start it at 1:00, go right to the budget and then go right to the workshop. Does that work?
Works for me. Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Gomez, have you got anything else for us?
Just thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, for your continued support. I appreciate it. I know the staff greatly, greatly appreciates your continued support. Thank you.
Thank you. I actually will say that I have noticed a much calmer atmosphere in City Hall, not just in City Hall, but with city employees in general. So thank you for the job that you're doing. City Clerk, have you got anything for us?
At the end of July, I'll put out a flyer. We're having a Part 1 of the Parliamentary. It'll be at 10:00 in the morning and it'll go to 11:30.
What was the date again? July 1?
I think it's the 29th.
July 12.
It's on a Friday. Let me look at the calendar. Because we're just putting that together. Tell you right now.
What is this, a League of Cities?
No, it's ours, the one that Clerk's put out. No, it's ours, the one that Clerk's put out. We didn't do it last year because of COVID.
Okay. Also, also ethics training. When are we going to have a
That's the 13th.
Group deal on that?
It's the 13th of July. And we'll be putting something out on that.
Oh, okay.
It'll be here in the chamber. You, when you register, you have to, each person still has to register through the link, and that way you can get a certificate. And, but you can still come in here. It's just that when you register and you're attending it, you know, that's how they keep tabs, because the certificates comes from Florida.
That's at 10:00 AM?
10:00 AM on Wednesday, July 13.
Okay. I had it in my calendar. It just slipped my mind. But I know when I go to try to register, it keeps asking me for a ID and password, which I have none. You've registered me in the past.
Yeah, that's the mayor's council. I registered for that. And I can register you for this too, as well.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir. And it is July the 29th at 10:00 AM for the parliamentary workshop.
It'll be here as well?
Yes, in the chamber here.
The chambers. Friday, July 29th, 10:00 AM. Okay, maybe you could get us an updated schedule, calendar?
Yes, sir. I'm actually typing it in right now, and I'll get that. And soon as I get the, the bio from Carol on the parliamentary, I'm going to send that out as well.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else have anything? How about y'all? Want to yell us, at us about anything before we close it down? I was kidding. Come on now.
Should I say my name for public?
Yes, please.
Shannon.
Name and address.
Shannon Sullivan, 13411 Boca Seaga Avenue. I want to commend you, Mayor Hendricks, the Second Vice Mayor Andrews, on the work he did for the, the pass and the funding. That's great news.
Thank you so much.
It's absolutely paramount for the city.
It's been quite a project over the past couple of years. So thank you.
Thank you.
And thank Linda Cheney also, because I was a squeaky wheel to Linda, but Linda was a squeaky wheel to the governor. And she really got it pushed through, because there were a ton of projects that were, were canceled. And this was a last-minute thing. I didn't know until the day it was signed that we were getting it for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. With that, this meeting is adjourned at 6:52 PM.